It is hell of a code, yeah.
So this is town council meeting, November 7th, 2018. If I tell the meeting order and if we can stamp the flag of allegiance. I'd like to lay this to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here to the meeting. I think it's for both parts pretty simple today, but at the end we do have all the comments. Where we don't get out of control, we do allow you to comment during the different items. If you have a question specific to what we're talking about, we'll try to entertain that. And that's part of our decorum for Town About Valley, those towns where we get to do that. But to you, we're going to. First thing on the list is mayor's town update. I always like to try to give you an idea of what's going on. I want to start off by mentioning something. I've talked to a lot of people in this town. I, sometimes I can't get any done because I'm talking to somebody so much between the phone or in person or at their property. And so far, I know it hasn't been enough of it. But I had a resident tell me something this week and it was, he was talking about when something feels right. Because we're talking about some of the issues and we're going to be talking about some issues tonight. And I wanted to remind you of this, is when I'm talking or even when else is talking, you're going to feel, if it feels right, you're going to feel it. And his comment was, if it's not right, you're going to feel that too. And I want you to think about that tonight when we're talking about stuff because there's some right and wrong, I think, that goes on. And I want you all to feel, does this feel like it's supposed to be this way? Or does it not feel like it's supposed to be this way? I also talked to another resident. I love the way she put it. She said that we all moved out here knowing what we were bound into. The dirt roads, the barges, the flash flooding issues, and now the town is expected to fix everything. And, you know, so I like the way she put it in that, you know, we didn't come out here because it was the gated community in Beverly Hills. It was, you know, there's some freedom that comes with where we live and what's going on. Of course, I don't think the town can be responsible for everything, and neither did she. But I just love the way she put it. So I wanted to share those thoughts for the week. And let me move on to a couple of items. The town, my way of looking and budgeting, my wife calls me up every once in a while and it's getting, you know, a little weak till the end of the month kind of a thing. And she'll say that you're on a budget right now, so don't spend anything and bring hot dogs home. That's, that's the way we budget in our house. And it's, in other words, we never go out there like we have tons of money. We spend it frantically in places that are important to us. And, and I think that every place that we can look for someplace to save, we try and do it in this town. I feel like at times I'm out in the parking lot picking up pennies just to try and save a buck here and there. And a couple of things that we've done in this last couple of weeks since I've talked to you. We've shut off, the SSD turned in two phones that were never turned off. We've got those turned off. That cost $1,056. And I talked to Harold Merrick, he said he'd make sure that we were reimbursed for that disconnect. And then we had another phone that was actually the mayor's old phone. And I, this is the phone right here. And I've disconnected that one as well. And I turned it on under my personal account just to save the town some money. So I'm not, I'm using the mayor's phone. I'm not using the company's or the town's money though to pay for it. And so when and if you guys get tired of me as mayor, I'll turn the phone in and it'll be yours still. I'm not going to keep it. And so that's just a couple of things we've done this last couple of weeks that are saving the town about $300 overall. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was .gov. I had no idea that what .gov was about, but I did notice that St. George, any place in southern Utah, I didn't find anybody that uses .gov except us. And we're building a new website. Most of you probably heard it, if you haven't heard it, let me just repeat that as well. We're, we are building a new website because our old website is not ADA compliant. It's so hard to find information, especially when it comes to ordinances and codes. We're going to make those searchable on the documents. You'll be able to go and just put in key search words, fencing, dogs, whatever it is you want to look up, and it'll find all those code places for you. That comes with, and by the way, it's just one of those pet projects I wanted to do. And instead of getting a paycheck, I'm paying for that, with that paycheck instead. So the town's basically paying for it, but it's what they would have normally paid me, so I'm working for free. I'm going to volunteer now. And that'll pay for all of that for the first year and the setup and the whole thing. It'll be so much better for everybody. But the .gov is what we've been using is applevalleyut.gov. And when I was researching, trying to move that .gov over to the town of Apple Valley, I learned that that's $400 a year that we pay to have a .gov account. I can see quickly why nobody has a .gov account in southern Utah. And so I want to, I'm probably off on my agenda, aren't I? Anyway, I'll leave that alone for a minute, we're going to come to that on item six. Anyway, so as far as savings go, this is just one of those savings. It's a couple thousand dollars is what that equals over five years. A .com is $52 for five years. And so that's one of those things that I feel like that it's a no-brainer that we want to do that to help save some money. And so our new address will be a .com instead of a .gov, same address. And so we're going to get rid of the .gov. And we're also trading in our coffee machine. It's getting towards the end of its lease anyway. And we were able to negotiate a deal that saves us $1,200 a year on the new machine. It's, which is practically identical to the last machine we had, no difference there other than the cost of operating it, including consumables and everything. It's going to save us about $1,200 a year. So it's another thing that we've done trying to, you know, improve the overall finances of the town. And I, so anyway, that's, that's, I had one other item I want to go over. It's, I went to a meeting last night at, that was down at the county commissioner's office or chambers, and it was to do with Ash Creek. Ash Creek and septic systems and so forth. Ash Creek has pretty much taken over the administration of septic systems in most of the areas. I guess the Conservancy District has half of the area, you know, county, and the other half is Ash Creek, and we're in the Ash Creek cap. And there, there are going to be some changes coming down the pipe on that. It looks like they're going to be requiring seven acres for a septic system. And we have grandfathered hookups. I don't know the number of those that we have, but I think it's sizable. But they're pretty much saying that any kind of a new subdivision is going to have to be subject to new regulations on how much filtering they have to do on a septic system. So existing lots, existing platted lots right now are not affected by this. But there could be a time that, in our future, that we have much stricter standards. You can always have a septic, it just would changes the price tag. It's, you know, an extra 10 grand or something to filter to this new level. There's also a maintenance factor involved where it can be a few, you know, thousand bucks, 1,500 bucks to service that septic system as well on an annual basis. So it, it, there could come a time in the effort to protect our groundwater that some rules change. So I've got a scheduled meeting with, one-on-one with them to find out exactly what does that mean to Apple Valley. We talk broad strokes when they get up there. Now I got to go talk to them about it. What, how does this affect Apple Valley in particular and have a one-on-one with them? So I'll be working on that. Anyway, that's all I have for a mayor's update for right now is, I got one more thing I have. You know, rumors lie and I like full disclosure. We're streaming this live on YouTube because we want to make sure that everybody knows that there isn't anything hiding in this administration at all. And one of them happened yesterday. We had their bookkeeper. I've been kind of on her about some problems that I've seen, put some pressure on her, and took off to do a few errands. Got a call a couple hours later says, "A man was not here and she hasn't come back." And so I thought, that's not a surprise. She probably knew I was going to fire her. We hired someone new and it just mattered days. But anyway, so she probably knew this was coming, she took off and left. The news that I want to give you, she allegedly paid herself a payroll check, gave herself a raise, gave herself severance pay, and transmitted this to the bank and so it would be an auto deposit without a signature needed. And lucky for me, my wife was, because she left, was in here prepping the payroll for these art employees so we could try to fix this problem. And she happened to notice it. This was about 10 minutes to 2:00, and there were mad dashes to the phone to call the bank so we could stop payment on that. And, and we got in there, no money was lost. And sheriff was called and an incident report was filed, so. But anyway, rather hear it from me than through rumors throughout the town that we have a possible investment effort on her part. And we will let the sheriff deal with this, so. Anyway, that's all the details I want to give you on that. And so for that, I think I'll just close item number one and say the town's update is over. Is there any questions?
The petition for the speed limit?
I put a petition in that everybody's water bill for the speed limit. If you didn't get one because you're online, we do have petitions here in the House. We'd like to have everybody sign. I've got a meeting scheduled for December 5th with UDOT. And it's about SR59. I pressured them pretty heavily last time about changing that speed limit down to 50. They said, "How are you going to force it?" I said, "I'm going to go buy a couple of signs that light up and flash in red and blue and tell you that you're going too fast either end of town." And I'm trying to get that speed limit slowed down for all of us. And it's just going to be in the property proper, probably a couple miles worth of the road, anything in terms of what we have right now. But if you please sign that petition, I would appreciate it. If you didn't get a petition, come in, we'll, even after the meeting, if you want to, we'll give you one to let you sign. And I'd just like to get all these filled out as much as possible. I like to go in there, stack three or four hundred of these things, lay them on the desk and say, "Everybody agrees."
And it's for each member in the household, correct?
Yeah, each member in the household that's an adult. So if there's two of you, some of you, one's a teenager, yes.
My only question regarding to that is I, you mentioned Apple Valley property, which is the main part of the town. What about the people that live up there through the point beyond? Because we've got much of a problem up there that you have here.
Yeah, we can, we can always ask for it to slow down at Cedar Point.
Even if they run it down to 55 miles an hour so that at least if the cop is there, they can address it? Because right now, they're doing 70, 75 each mile, mile or two there.
Well, my, my point on the Apple Valley property is that where we have residents and a lot of interchange and that would qualify, I would, I would hope that we could change it from, is it Canyon on the SI Cedar Point?
Yes.
To Dead Man's Curve. That would be my perfect world because in between there is even Richard Fisher, I think he's there somewhere, that 400 east?
Main Street.
Or north, what is that, one yard?
Main Street and the Coyote Axle, which is 400 right there.
400 what? North or, I can't remember.
I think it's 400 north, but.
So anyway, that's.
Main Street's what we use mostly.
Because between Main Street and even where he is tapping his brakes to get off that dirt road, it's, it's scary even at the, you know, where Moser lives and the storage units are. It's crazy through there. When you hit the brakes, you're trying to get off the road as fast as you can and there's sloping and sliding.
Not only UDOT, if they give it to us, they'll let us do it about where the Dead Man's Curve area is to about Main, and then we'll have to leave that three or four mile gap open, speed it back up and then drop it back down to Cedar Point area because they won't let us have the whole entire area. That's not UDOT.
You know, my argument to them was in Hildale, you'll let them slow it down. And there is less cross-traffic on that highway where Hildale slows it down than what we have. We have more intersections hitting that highway than they do by far. I'm going to go count them before I go to that meeting and we're going to be having a discussion about it. And believe me, they, when I'm done talking to them, they're going to know they've listened to me. Because I have a way of doing that. Anyway, I will, I feel like a little passionate about it. I know the two mayors before me tried, I could be, I don't succeed, but I'm not going to, not going to stop me from trying. So, marche.
Didn't, this was a long time ago, but it used to be applevalleyutah.com. And didn't some, didn't it, didn't somehow, they didn't pay something, Apple Valley didn't pay for it? And then it became some, some other dom, you know, when you type that in, it went to like an Asian kind of website. So can you get that domain back?
I already have it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I already have it. It's $52 that we're all signed up for.
Okay.
So I know this doesn't affect too many people with this .gov, but it affects me pretty heavily because I've been out there and there is entities in southern Utah that do use .gov.
Yeah, I tried, but.
DNR, BLM, a lot of these guys.
Yeah, when you're federal, they can afford it.
Government. So what I would suggest doing is checking your business cards because all of our cards say that. So I checked the prices on that because I think we spent a few hundred dollars on those alone.
Yeah, compared to $400 a year, we can buy new business cards, we have to.
So that'll be $300, $400 alone.
I know those can be more than that, but that's only for one-time purchase of business cards, not like.
And what does that payment do?
My, my business cards, let me go over that with you. My business cards were $17, $18 for 500 of them. And so times the three or four people we have.
10 people? We got council members, we got me.
I don't think you guys have cards, do you?
Yes.
Okay, so we even times 10 people, that's 70.
Plus the .com changeover?
The .com's $52.
It's kind of a.
Compared to 400.
Maybe balance it and look at it because commercial is .com. That's what .com is. So it opens us up to a lot of stuff. .gov does not. When you see .gov, I've dealt with it, you know that's legit. So a .com is going to be, I don't know, some cities have gone to it, yes, but a lot of them stick with .gov.
I, I Googled a bunch of them, I couldn't find one in some of Utah, but other than federal government. And that's why I figured that federal government, they got the deep pockets, they can pay for it. Everybody else thought .org or .com, and we can do it even at .org, .org on it.
Well, I think 400's a pretty cheap price to pay for an $8,000 website.
No, $400 per year. So you're talking $2,000 over five years compared to $52.
And how much is our maintenance on that website a year?
It's about $400.
Okay.
But that website is doing operational things. The .gov doesn't do anything for us.
It does, in the world.
Okay, well, when you Google Apple Valley, Utah, the .com is going to get found as well. But to answer your question on the expiration.
It's professional, let's just put it that way. I've dealt with it in professions and .gov is a professional.
Well, then St. George is a professional, Ivans is a professional.
I wasn't talking to you.
And Hildale?
I'm allowed to have public comments, too, sir.
I'm talking to them, I'm talking to them.
I'll tell you what, if I had a business card and if I didn't want to print out much of new ones, a nice pen line through the old one, I'd write the new one.
Yeah.
It's not a big deal.
Well, it is and it isn't. I mean, it depends on who you're dealing with and how professional you want to look. If we're spending a bunch of money on a website.
So you're saying our .gov right now is real professional, that's not ADA compliant, that you can't even read one of them.
That's your website, correct? That has nothing to do with our .gov, that has to do with the website, correct?
Oh, no, I'm saying you're talking about being professional though. So what you're worried is, is we're not professional. You have to look at our website and call that professional.
If we change .com.
You guys have been against me spending my own money to do a website improvement, to upgrade the town. And so now you're fighting me on the address because that's not professional.
Now we're getting off subject.
We aren't a, we're right on target on the subject right now. Because that's what you guys feel is that we are not professional if we have a .com account compared to .gov.
No, I'm just saying it's more professional because I've dealt with them on the government side.
And so is that old website.
It's a legitimate email that we, we use, .gov is. I've dealt with it, dealing with the military.
You still have a .gov website or on the email.
And I have a lot of stuff on mine that I'm going to have to.
For emails?
Yes.
Those don't change?
Emails and everything.
Those don't change.
I'll just transfer all of them.
.gov has nothing to do with our emails. Those are through Google and they let us have a .gov.
Yeah, I just, it's a, it's something I've used for a while and I don't really want.
We're not changing.
But I understand.
We're not changing any emails.
I understand about saving money and stuff, I just need to look at the prices a little better personally with the.
That's what we're doing, that's why we're going to change it over to .com because we can save some money.
That's good, that's good.
This is one more thing per year that we got to do. And I feel like that it's, it's going to make no difference. And people find our website, but when they do find it, they'll actually be able to read it. And they'll be able to find something on it, they'll be able to do searches on it, they'll be able to find information.
I wasn't talking about the email or your website. I was talking about the email. That's all.
You're just talking about the search engine.
Yeah, I was just talking about that.
The emails are not changing at all.
That's all I was talking about.
We don't have to change the emails, those are all, .gov still.
The website stuff, I got nothing to do with that.
The .gov doesn't cost us anything on the emails to have.
Yeah.
Those are, those are free.
That's fine, I've just dealt with .gov and I know, I know how it works, so.
Anything else? Should we close that?
I make a motion, we close mayor's town update.
Senator.
Vote?
Aye.
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 So we have a consent calendar to look at. Any questions on it?
No, sir, I reviewed it. I checked all the texts.
Danny, you okay with it? Can I jump out? Any questions?
No.
So we get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion, we approve the consent calendar for October 1st through November 1st, 2018.
And second? Vote?
Aye.
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 And Mike is abstaining because he wants to get these sooner than later. And so we'll make a note of that, Michelle, but those consent calendars, we'll make sure we get them out.
I didn't get the email, so.
She, okay, he didn't get the email.
Oh, I didn't get the email.
We'll have to figure out why that happened, but anyway, my apologies, Mike. But we'll probably get that corrected, so. Next item on our agenda, approval of a printer agreement with West Holson Company. I mentioned this in the first item, that we're just changing basically apples for apples and it saves us $100 a month, so kind of a no-brainer if we can save some money. Any questions?
Nope. Good. I make a motion, we approve the agreement, the lease agreement with West Holson.
Aye, sir. Vote?
Aye.
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 Next is discussion action on town donations. Anytime somebody's donating something, we're supposed to accept it as a town council. And I usually, I wear a lot of hats in this place. I'm the planning department, I'm the mayor, I'm the janitor. And the janitor part of it, someone must have overheard me cussing at the vacuum that we have. And we came in, there was one on the doorstep one morning. We don't know who donated that, but we appreciate it very much. And so we wanted to just, you know, say thank you in public to whoever might have left that vacuum on the, on our doorstep like a lost baby. So I appreciate it, whoever did it, so. Anyway, so I just make a motion, we thank the, the anonymous donors, so.
My second. Vote?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Discussion action on .gov versus .com. How do you guys feel about the comments? Do you guys want to keep the .gov?
It's good, it was.
I'm sorry. I, my apologies, I don't have my glasses. I lost them three days ago and if you have glasses, you know what that's like. It's, it's held until you finally find them. I'm still at the fountain.
Well, there should be a pair on the doorstep.
Oh, discussion action on volunteers. What I want to say on that, I've got some notes here, is that Kevin Serra's been our code enforcer and he spends most of the hours he worked for us, he really is a code enforcer. And he's decided to retire with social security. And we're replacing his duties with a volunteer. I do want to thank Kevin for his service community, but he's not really leaving the community. He's not really leaving the town. He said that he can't make any money between now and January 1st. And that January 1st, he wants to come back and, and he says, "But if you need me in the meantime, you know, we can still call him up if we need like backhoe service, that kind of a thing." So he's, anyway, so that's what is up with Kevin. I've thought a lot about this. I've talked to the council on different occasions over the last, past couple of months. And we have decided that I want to try Rich Ososki for the area out in Gooseberry. We're going to give it a, as, as Rich Ososki put it, a trial basis to see if he likes it as well because he may hate the job. And we may hate the job he does, so. But I'll tell you what I've learned about Rich Ososki is that he is meticulous, he is thorough, he makes lots of notes, and he's the kind of guy you need in code enforcement, does the paperwork right, he understands the code. I asked him, I says, "So give me a, what Rich Ososki as a code enforcer, what that would look like to me?" And he says, "I always like to talk to people first. The first thing I like to do is go knock on the door, have a conversation with them so we can have a, a talk about what the problem is." And he says, "I've even gone over to help them to replace whatever needs to, to help fix the problem." He's built dog pens, replaced by light bulbs for people, you know, let's just put this one in, they'll, they'll match code. And so he's, I think that I want to try him out for code enforcement for the Gooseberry area. And my desire is to have a code enforcer by area as a volunteer because it helps us with our budget to get it back in line. And the more of these little things we do, I think it involves the community. And so I will be looking for someone at these different communities. And so if you're interested in being a code enforcer in your community, just let me know. And so with that, I would recommend that we, I think what we have to do is, are you okay to do this then? Rich Ososki, you still feel good about this today?
Yeah, if I could speak for a few minutes.
I want you to, if I can one up here. While he's coming up here, I want to say something about Rich Ososki. I gave him a book. This is the directory for every town and city in Utah. And I says, "Hey, how do you do on the book?" Because he wanted the book, he wanted to be able to call and say, "You know, how do your town handle it? What do you guys do? What problems do you have? How do you solve them?" And he says, "Well, I didn't get through the whole book, I got through maybe half of it." All the towns all over Utah to find out how they handle it. So anyway, that's why I use my pick.
As far as code enforcer, that's not really my expertise. People are my, kind of my, my way I want to attack things, if you want to use that word. I did use that book, I got through half of it. That was only about 100 taps. All the way from Park City to Parawan to every town I could think about to see what they do. I got a wide range of comments. A lot of them was, "How old are you and why? And are you..." And are you a little, go in that direction? Because I see where you had to ask my wife. We have a town marshal that takes care of that. A number of towns didn't even have code enforcers. A couple of them share code enforcers, a couple have the clerks do it. One town told me, I believe it was Park City, said that you knew about the code enforcer up north that, and I said, yeah, I know what you're talking about. And I said, yeah, and you still want to think, and you're volunteering, what is the matter with you? So they went, and I was surprised, some of them had the sheriff do it, some of them take it to the town council, you know? I went even so far as to call the league attorney. His name is David Church, a really nice guy on the phone. He said he'd send me some information. I did, we did talk about, they should really have a code enforcer class, because I like classes. And he said they actually do. And I said, okay, well, I got some bad news and some good news. The good news is that they do do a three-day code enforcer class. The bad news, it's in Hawaii.
That's the good news.
Oh, yeah. What about the bad news? Despite that in the minutes. But if it weren't too large, you would like to go along, so I would ask for donations. That would help the battle out. Actually, we were married in 1999 and I was at a conference in Hawaii, so I'm a fo'goo type guy, you know? And the board of directors were at our wedding. So I was quite interested, we're gonna kind of look at it in a different way. And I do like, I wrote some nuisance complaints and I think that's why the mayor picked me. He said, you're gonna fix your own nuisance complaints, you know? And I had no problem with that, but I've always talked to the people that I have wrote. But I also believe it should be confidentiality. That is the main thing. If somebody wants to do it, and we don't pit neighbor against neighbor, it has to be legit. You know, so on a serious note, how many in here feel like they're in violation of the code? Wow, that many, huh? Well, I would like to, we'll meet after the meeting and we'll start our paperwork.
How are you gonna get over your bashfulness?
Well, I've been working on that, Margie helps a lot, you know? And, 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 you know, and she's not very bashful, so she kind of coaches me, you know? So I kind of.
Yeah, get out there and do it now.
That's exactly right. Really, what I'm trying to do is, let's put a little humor in nuisance complaints, you know? You know, let's not take everything so serious, but you know, if you don't work together, we're not going to get anywhere. So I feel like, you know, I do like to keep notes of everything because my mind doesn't remember too much anymore. So, but we'll give it a try, see what happens and then also I feel like a code enforcer, it has to be accessible, you know? And I don't know the code. You take a code class because you know where to look, you don't memorize a code. So it takes time, but I carry a phone with me at all times and I'm, I answer it at all times, so it's no big deal. So there's, I've been here ten years, you know? We try to take care of our area. Has anybody got any questions they'd like to ask me?
Just the comment, it all goes back to your ordinances then?
Yeah, the ordinances. Well, you know, sometimes ordinances have to be tweaked a little bit. And, and, and sometimes you got to understand that you can't take care of every violation. There's a money aspect to them and the liability and everything. So you got to kind of weigh it and, and see where we stand. You can't go after everybody and I realize that. But I think it should be kind of logged. And, and the big problem is, and I've been on both sides of the fence on Apple Valley, so I, I know what one side is and I know what the other side is. On some of these nuisance complaints, you write up one nuisance complaint, but there may be a number of other ones that are similar that are not ruled up. And so it's hard to go after one when a lot of other people are in violation. And, and being in court is very expensive and attorneys are very expensive. So, you know, just do the best we can and, and then if I could ask for your support and if you do see something that isn't right, you know? Try talking it out and, and seeing, because I'll tell you the truth, what I found out, most people don't even know they're in violations. And most people got the attitude, not most, but I found out that it's my land, I can do as I please. Those times are gone, you know? When you moved here, you ended up to be a town, and now that you're a town, you've got rules and regulations. And, and people moving in still don't believe it. But at some point, you've got to start enforcing the code and then maybe the word will get out.
All right, thanks. Yeah, we need to have a resolution.
We're gonna first do the resolution. I make a motion.
What do you want me to do?
I make a motion that we do resolution number 2018-25 to appoint Rich Ososki as volunteer code enforcer. Vote.
Aye.
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 And now we do the vote office.
Can I ask for a question on the floor regarding this before we shut it down? My question is, so now we're gonna go ahead and do separate areas. Even seventy doesn't help.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, I'm getting old, so I just lost the whole plot.
Oh, yeah.
In regards to.
Well.
Yeah, that's different areas. So does that mean Rich is not going to be able to deal with other areas?
I'm sure we can ask him to do that, I was hoping I could get more volunteers, so it wasn't all on one person. So if you had something specific.
I want, I, I'd like to volunteer, but I, there's just so many issues where I'm laying right now on that area up there that. I, and we're gonna bring it up to the council and to the members that are here. I'm the one that gets, when they come knocking, they come knocking at my door, Deb's door, somebody's door. And it's like. I address them to the town council and to the townspeople because I feel like it's not my place to tell somebody what they can do. I do try to help them in regards to the fact that, like Rich spoke earlier, that it's very important to have a little rapport about what you do. And I think, I went over into the incident, but Deb knows what I'm talking about when it came to an issue I had right across the street. It was handled very quickly, whether the town did it or whether I made them aware that they needed to come down here and do it right. Because they just said, I was told this, I was told that, and they led down the path the wrong way. And I think we have a little of that issue going on up there, here and there around the neighborhood. And I get asked a question, what's going on? Da-da-da-da, you know?
May I just say that this is a trial thing that we're working here?
I think it's good, I think.
Yeah, I do, I do too, but I, I would hope that because it's a trial thing, I mean, you can make this almost a full-time job with the way we're spread out in this town. So I'm, I'm hoping that people will step up and, and volunteer.
Well, I think we see the point in my residence there. And that is that I have seen a lot going on since I've been here, and I've been here for ten years. There was nothing. Now you see what it is. And the issues get larger every day when you're driving down the streets and you think to yourself, why is this light testing? Okay? And I'm hoping that in Rich's case over in Gooseberry, that he will have the town council and the people that are of authority backing him because he's gonna need that. When he comes to you and says, look, I'm dealing with this problem and helping figure out the best solution, okay?
I think when each of the volunteers get involved in trying to solve some of these problems, you start seeing the other side of that problem, which is the people themselves. And I'm not saying that we got to ignore everything at all, I'm just saying that sometimes, you know, some tolerance can go a little bit ways anyway.
Yeah.
But sometimes it's just flagrant and it's, you know, we have to do something about it. And that's, that's kind of why we, we have to have someone that's doing some code enforcement. It's, but it's, it's a challenge because the teeth that we have in our code, I'm not sure there's enough. That it allows us to really, you know, hey, you're in violation, oh, what are you gonna do about it? You know, that kind of a problem. And so anyway, it's, I think that's probably improved because of adopting the county code. I've got to have to sit down with Rachel again, our district attorney, and see if, you know, how she feels with some of those issues, but anyway, we're trying.
I just like that, and just hoping in my part, as you've been saying, it's a good idea, I think it's gonna work. I hope that in time I can step forward and maybe help and see the point. I don't want to be a troublemaker, but on the other hand, I think it's important that people understand that you're now in a community where there are rules. And I come from a big city where that's all it was, was rules and we live by them. And I know that it just, it may be easier for me to accept it because I've been there for forty-five years, but. We're growing and I, I look forward to seeing this working well and hopefully I'll be knocking it door a day and saying, look, I'd like to do this.
Janet, can I have a question?
What about serial offenders? We've gone through three code enforcers and I still have neighbors that let dogs turn wild and bark all summer night. Four people have had to build fences, seven thousand dollars plus just to keep dogs out of their yard. And three code enforcers have dealt with these people and nothing gets them.
Yeah, well, the, the teeth that I was talking about before is.
We put them in, the, the ordinances, this, this type. They're there.
Okay, but the teeth, the ordinance is there, but I'm talking about the teeth is the fines, things like that. In the past, we haven't had that connectivity with the code to, what the infraction is to what it is, the penalty is. I believe on code on dogs, especially, that is gone. And so you can even, at this point, my understanding is, we can call county sheriff at this point? Is that not right?
That's correct.
You can call the county sheriff because our rules, we've adopted the county rules.
Yeah.
And so if you, if you document these things with them, they can go there and now it's going to be before the DA and they're gonna be paying a fine.
We have dogs barking on one side and wolves on the other side at three o'clock in the morning. You know, it's getting a little.
Wolves in a pan.
Harbor park, yeah.
You know, one thing, I did talk to a town and for their dog problem, they had a state nuisance ordinance, with serious, for loud exhaust pipes and things of that nature. One town used the sheriff, one used the marshal, but they did go, but they had a retainer to them, that was the only difference. But I think on, on dogs and barking and stuff like that, they actually had the sheriff come out and after so many complaints and.
They cite them and then there's a dollar fine, it's like speeding.
Yeah, it is, they put a heavy fine. And then as far as nuisance complaints, which I don't think it would work here, I especially know it wouldn't work here. One town had, to where you had to have two people sign off on a nuisance complaint. Because they were having neighbor pitted against neighbor and they didn't think that was, but that wouldn't work here, but if you could get the sheriff to come out, they would pay more attention to that. Because I know your problem over there and it's a bad one.
Yes.
And it's been going on for a long time.
Twelve years.
Yeah, at least.
And it costs us eight, eight grand to build a fence around our yard.
It didn't help.
On one side. No, it quits the digging in our yard, but it annoys.
It's a shame.
Even though it's been happening, though, I think the right answer is, is you call the sheriff, call the sheriff, call the sheriff. Because then when they're out there enough, they will cite them and they're gonna get a speeding ticket, kind of a fine.
At three o'clock in the morning, they'll call their crew.
Yeah.
I called them on my neighbor's, the dog, they were coming over and defecating on my porch, so I called the sheriff. And it worked out real good because the sheriff gave them a course date. And they did the best thing they could do, they got rid of the dog. So I don't have a problem no more.
Margie?
Janet, what the, you know, with speeders that we have, the sheriff told us to write the date down, the time, the car, and who was driving. So like if you're having a barking dog, write the times, you know, I don't have a date, I had a calendar and I just kept writing down what, you know? So when they barked, just put the time on the calendar, what day they were barking. So that way, and then after about, you know, maybe a couple of weeks, you can, you know?
Shows the history.
Call the sheriff and say, hey, I've, I've documented this and, and then turn it into the sheriff.
Maybe get a recorder and record it. And then put it on speaker.
I doubt you can get away with that, that's whose dog is it, but anyway, if we go ahead with the soul office.
I'm Richard Ososki.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of.
To the office of.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And I would discharge. The duties of my office.
The duty.
For fidelity.
Well, thanks for being a brave man and taking that job on. Volunteers are really what make Apple Valley what, what it is and you might not want code enforcement, but if you want a job, we probably have one for you, so. We do appreciate those that kick in and help us out where they can. So we're back to the .gov, does anyone have any second thoughts after some of the comments about what we might want to do on the .gov? You want to hang on to it or order those here?
Say what I mean.
So the .gov, we change with the email or just change?
No, just, yeah, it's just only the web address. Because we still have it, we can keep it, but it's, I just thought it was, I've been, I've had websites for most of my life, of one kind or another. It's. What is it, .net or .org or .com, .gov, I just, I don't see the point in spending more dollars. They have a, it's, it's kind of ridiculous that they have this. I don't know, block on that particular extension and they can just charge whatever you want for it. Any comments? Anybody?
I think it's a good, good deal that they changed it to save more money.
Any, any other comments on it? Start reviewing them.
Yeah, I, I agree with changing and I just don't want it to, you know, just, the business cards and stuff like that, I don't want to.
It's not gonna affect your email address. And actually, for four months, it won't even affect anything because we're, we just point the old address to the new address anyway and so .gov is still gonna be active. I just didn't want to renew it when it comes time to renew it because I just felt like it was a.
I just never heard about this and this was the first time. I, I was hoping maybe I'd hear about this sometime or something, someone had told us.
That's what we're doing right now.
Office maybe or something, set it out here.
There's a lot of moving parts, so they move fast and I, I forget to tell these guys stuff all the time, but I try to on a regular basis. I see you, you're used to dashing through and, you know? Anyway, but the .gov.
I'm for it to save us money.
The .gov email will still work, it's not gonna change that at all.
Okay.
I'm gonna volunteer the, the money to change Debbie's cards to the .com address.
You're gonna have to change your email, though.
Anyway, so do we have a motion to do?
I make a motion that we accept the change from .gov to .com.
I second that motion.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Motion carries. Really gonna have to get glasses. Okay, policies and procedures, item number seven, discussion action on town personnel policies and procedures manual. We've had, um, I, I've been in the business world for a long time and I would appreciate any comments from you guys, experiences are as well, 'cause I don't, this isn't a dictatorship. It's a, you know, I would like to have some feedback. But in my experience, in the workforce, I have always had health insurance provided to by whoever, whatever employer I was working for. And it was always part of the health insurance. And if I wanted to give dental, I had to pay for it. If I wanted it for the family, I had to pay for it. And it just seems to me that that's a bigger slice of what goes on out there. And somehow, when you turn into a municipality, it's free lunch. And everybody wants everything and it doesn't cost them anything. And I, I don't think it's the right way to do it. Um, it's, um, I think it's a, in, I think it's a mistrust of the money as far as our budget goes and our dollars and to go and just say carte blanche. You can have ten times what every other person that we're serving, the people we're taxing, and we just go, lunch, you have all this carte blanche Cadillac plan instead of, you know, making them drive a Chevy.
Now, I'd say every place I've worked, that, uh, they have offered insurance for the individual and you have a right to negotiate that you pay so much for, for your family or relatives or whoever you want under policy, is not paid for by the employee and other stuff. And that's the way that you should be able to tell.
But that's how, that's how most companies work. They allow you to buy into the joint policy. I mean, what's your experience? Anybody wanna comment on that?
I've had health insurance, I've never had life insurance attached to it.
What about your wife?
She's had health insurance through her job.
Okay, so you both have separate policies there.
Well, at one time, my boss covered her, but then she wound up through her employer, I wound up through mine, but there was never life insurance attached to that.
But you paid a separate for her when you bought it, right?
No, she had it through her employer.
So they've always had a separate then?
Right.
Any comment?
I've had it, and every time I have insurance, the company pays half and we pay the other half. And that's the way it was.
Well, I think in the real world, that's kinda how it is, but...
My insurance is, I think it's pretty good. I have fifty percent on dental, I have eyeglasses every two years, I have major medical. With Medicare, of course, I have a bill, and I've had some pretty good bills. And Margie's also covered under my policy, and my insurance is two sixty a month.
But that's a supplement you take out plus Medicare, right?
Yeah, Medicare's my primary.
Right.
And then I have a supplement that picks up the difference. And that's on prescription drugs too. All my prescription drugs are like bifocals.
Yeah, that's a Medicare, that's a little different from what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm thinking with a small town and they don't have a budget, I don't believe that the people that work for it should get a free lunch. They should have to pay for their own insurance if they're gonna do it. 'Cause we in Apple Valley, we can't afford all that cost.
Well, Sean, I'd say being a town entity, being a government entity, what's, we have to have a minimum what the government expects for us to have.
Um, yes, and so as I listen to this, there, there's more discussion that needs to be had internally before making a decision. Even though some elements of the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, uh, are not being enforced right now, there are still regulations that are technically in place that, for example, would require you to provide the same level of benefits for all, all the employees that you offer in that class and not have some pay more than others pay, those types of things, unless you have different insurance plans. The difference between the insurance plans even used to be, the premiums used to be only within like a fifteen percent spread. I mean, that's how technical it was getting. Now they've, the feds have backed off on some of that, but there still are some, still are some minimum requirements for your insurance plan. That's why we actually, um, have an advisor that helps us not only making sure that our plans meet the requirements that are being enforced with, by the federal government and under the ACA, but also that we're doing our reporting that is required under the ACA to, on health insurance. So it's, it's not quite the same as, as maybe, um, people who have, years ago had insurance with their employers, the laws have changed with it.
Well, the, uh, we're not suggesting that we don't provide insurance. Only we're suggesting is that we only provide it to the employee and we offer them any other benefits or umbrellas that they have to pay for, whatever it is they want to opt in on.
And there was, and I don't think it, there was a requirement under the ACA that anybody who works more than thirty hours average, you had to provide the health insurance or anything. What I'm just saying is that, yeah, you just wanna make sure that anything that you decide that, uh, we make sure that it meets the technical requirements.
Now, the only thing I'm suggesting, um, that we're, that we do is we're putting it on record, we're changing our policies and procedures manual that we, says that the most that the town will be able to do for you is the employee. And we're offering health and dental on the employee, and then they have an option for anything else that is offered in the plan, they can pay for.
Pay the difference.
And it's open to them to do whatever they wanna do. And they can have their spouse only, they can put the family plan, they can do. But they have to pay for the difference. So we're just coming up with a standard that says that, um, so the reasons comes up is we go back as far as Nathan and, um, our previous bookkeeper, there's, um, Cadillac plan is where we pay for the whole family, including the kits for life insurance, including the metals and eyeglasses, including funding through HSA account. And, you know, I just think it's ridiculous that we're, we're talking about paying out on some of these people as much as three thousand dollars in these benefits. And I just think it's so wrong that we provide that level of coverage when all of us in here that are paying the taxes, we get it covered, if we're lucky, for ourselves, and we have to pay the difference out of our paycheck for that extra coverage. And I just, um, St. George City might offer it, they can probably afford it. This town, we can't afford it.
We can't afford it, by the way. As someone who sat on the healthcare committee since I've been there, it's, it's difficult. But are you currently using P E H P for your medical provider?
Right, we have, we do have an option of just, saying to have just one person.
No, I totally understand all that. What I wanted to point out is that if you go through the trust and P H P, they, they do have a benefit where they will include in that package deal fifty thousand dollars worth of life insurance. That just comes with it. So I just, I wanna make sure that people understand that when there's life insurance there, it doesn't necessarily mean that the town is paying any more for that first layer. It's when you go above that, that then the employee, in our, in our situation, employee picks up the difference if they wanna insure on that.
Well, there's no free lunch. If you're picking up, um, a family plan with life insurance, it all comes with a price tax someplace. I mean, it's, yeah, okay, because we're paying, you know, for life insurance or because we're paying for health insurance for the whole family, and you're saying that it might be included in that, uh, at that price, it still is, you know, three thousand dollars worth of, uh, benefits that we're, that this is a town we can be on a hook for. And it's just, it's insane. We're just a small community, we shouldn't be, um, even enrolled, in my opinion, at this point, based on our budget and retirement system. So right now, when I hire someone full-time, I have to give them retirement. And that's, um, so that's another sixteen, seventeen percent, um, that we have to provide. Why do we have to do that? Because the previous mayor, two times ago, signed up for it. And once you're in, you're in. You can't get out. You can't say, I changed my mind. You're in, you're in. And so we, so it ends up costing us a, a lot of money. I mean, it's, to have one employee, you end up, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, you know, it depends on what they're paid, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous.
Um, I know they have a tier one and tier two, right?
That's correct.
You probably know about that more than I do.
Yes.
What is required in that tier one or tier two? Is that required by all cities on that tier one?
It's based on the date that they were hired. So everybody's tier two right now if they're hired prior to a certain date.
Yeah, that's...
Or after.
Yeah.
After a certain date, right?
Yeah, I know that, but the tier one requires what's in that package.
That, that's, the, the package wouldn't say, would, would stay the same for those that were hired prior to that date, when that were grandfathered in as tier one.
Is that retirement? Is that...
That's retirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
That's for the retirement benefits.
And that's cities. I know St. George is like that, and I know Washington's like that.
Yeah, all of them, all of public entities are, 'cause under, and it's, it's just under state law, if you are a public entity and you have, you have a full-time employee, then you have to now start paying into the...
But that's just for the employee.
Not exactly, it's, it's, in other words, as a town at Apple Valley, if we weren't signed up with the Utah retirement system, we wouldn't have to, no matter if we're full-time or not, give them retirement. It's, you know, it's, us being signed up means that we're now where we are. We're forced to, we don't have any choice. But up until that time, that decision wasn't made, we wouldn't have had retirement. And a small community like ours, it's a used deal. It's, it's a deal breaker on whether we can hire somebody because the amount of money it takes to hire someone. That's why we're asking for volunteers, 'cause we got, you know, we have to hire one or two people, and it's like, that's our total budget going, kind of a problem, so, anyway. So that's my recommendation, that we're at least just correcting that in the future, if someone's hired, they have to pay on their own for that, those extra benefits if they choose to elect to have them. And if the mayor that's way beyond me decides to, they have to come into a meeting like this and say, I wanna change it. That's the only reason I'm doing this, 'cause I can make this decision on my own internally when I hire somebody. But what I wanna do is have it on record that we're trying to save some money where we can, and how ridiculous I think it is that we're paying that kind of money out for someone that, I mean, there isn't anybody probably in this room that gets that kind of coverage that is working for a non-government kind of a job. And I just think it's ridiculous. We're taxing here so we can have this Cadillac plan and be cruising down the road. I just, it pisses me off. Anyway, that's, that's my feeling on changing this. We're trying to improve, um, our bottom line as well as some equality, in my opinion, for what is real out there in the world. So any comments on it? Any comments?
I, I'm okay, as long as we're following guidelines, the basic guidelines that we need to follow with the government entity and state regulations on time.
Yeah, we're not forced to do anything. We haven't, we're forced to enroll anyone that's full-time, and we're gonna do that. We just wanna enroll the whole family and...
Exactly, and I agree with that.
Yeah, so...
I agree.
You okay with that, Sean?
We're all right with it.
Okay.
Have a motion. So I make a motion that we, um, edit the personnel policies and procedures back of the manual, because we have a, maybe we read that one. Let me get that out. I'll just read that. So I'll read it, um, as we have it here.
You need to strike the two and three.
Yeah, I don't think we know this right. We'll just, we'll table this for next time. So we're gonna table this for next time as we're gonna, I've heard the verbiage, I, uh...
I have a motion for that.
My apologies to not having that, uh, right, so. Uh, so I make a motion that we just table this for the next meeting.
I second the motion.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Discussion on Big Plains Water and Sewer District billing issues. Our last meeting for Big Plains Water District, I just wanna bring to everyone's attention that, um, the, uh, water company is, um, doing some stuff that I'm not in favor of and I'm gonna use, use this time to talk about it. First off, on the, um, on the billing issues, they, when I was put in as mayor, that happened on September fifth. The, uh, Big Plains Water District had a meeting in September fourth, conveniently. And, um, they have, um, decided at that meeting that they were going to separate the billing. And it's, it's been a thrill over the last couple of months in talking to countless residents that are upset about it. And, um, I just, I haven't had anybody say, this is such a great idea, except for the water district. And, um, so what, I asked them, that, uh, right after I was put in, I asked Harold and his daughter, why is it that you guys wanna do this? I think it was a sticky note, Tish, in that back office. Would you grab it for me? It's about this big. Would you mind?
Sean?
Very, very back office. So we had a meeting and we talked about why it is that we're doing this.
I did return the phone call. I'm sorry, mayor, there was a question asked, and you, you have the floor, it's your...
No problem.
I did receive a phone call from Ben Rouge. I returned that call, but got his voicemail, and I left him a message to give me a call back, so I have not talked to him directly.
Not to intervene, but to make a point, what our attorney has suggested, that since we want to make peace here and we are not looking for a bite or a pound of flesh from anyone, that we would like to have you and Ben get together, or, uh, Ross Grayerson, and, uh, find out where everybody is at, what everybody's talking about, and bring us together and, and find some usable solution. And so that is Ben's, he would, and he left a message with you, so you know what?
And mayor, I just want you to know that, that, uh, that, that happened today while I was in meetings, and why, I returned the call on my way out here, so I hadn't have, didn't have a chance to, to let you know that I had received that phone call.
Okay. Are you advising me on your direction right now?
No, you're the mayor and you're, you're freedom to have anything.
I just want you guys to know what it's like to be mayor for a minute. Because from the day I stepped on, uh, this podium and said, okay, I'll, uh, I'll give a roar, guys. For those that are new, I was kinda shamed, um, to be mayor. How'd it be a good idea? I didn't agree with them at first, but, um, after a couple of meetings, they, you know, convinced me that maybe it's a good idea. And I thought, you know what, I, I would love to get back to the community in whatever way I can. And I, I do this as a volunteer, just like so many that do volunteers as well. I'm amazed at the number of hours it takes to do the job and the number of mayor meetings I have at midnight and with myself. We have a lot of those. And it's a, it's a real challenge to, um, come up with different things. And I feel like that since the day I walked in here, it was one grenade after another thrown my way. And, um, they came in one, from one general direction. And starting off with, um, my meeting with Harold Merrick on the SSD and separating billing, um, he says, well, maybe, maybe it's not a good idea. Maybe we should, uh, you know, consider that this isn't good for the community. He had a conversation with his daughter and all of a sudden that changed, and now it wasn't a great idea. And I, I came into the meeting, this is, this is something cool, I'm writing down a stand-up. This is a sticky note that she got. And I got a big kick out of it because it's a, it's a big sticky note. But I came in and I asked them, and I says, how about if the SSD just buy your paper, buy the stamps, buy the envelopes, and then you just collect the water bill data? And then we'll give you all of your, um, uh, late fees. That's what all this is about, is damn wanting to do late fees. And, um, I talked to, and then I said, what we can do is, we'll print the bills, we'll answer the phones, collect the payments, print the receipts, stuff, mail the envelopes, print reconciliation, and, and then we'll give them the late fees. That wasn't good enough. I mean, it's like, I gave them everything they want, and that's not good enough. We're still gonna separate. And, um, so at, at this particular meeting, yeah, we had an impasse where they wanted to, um, go their separate way... And so, at, at this particular meeting, yeah, we had an impasse where they wanted to go their separate way, and the reason is, is they don't want to have anything to do with us as a town. Now, the town's created this Water District to be a service to us, but they don't want to do what's good for the town as much as what's good for them. I invited some people into the meeting tonight. One of the things that they're doing that really absolutely gets me, I just go limit over this, they make a decision to let everybody pay twenty-nine dollars per month on their water bill or on their standby fee, and in exchange for you paying that twenty-nine dollars, we're going to allow you to not have to have an impact fee. And so all this time goes by, people have been paying this fee, and then all of a sudden they decide, oh, we changed our mind. We're not going to do it that, quite that way, and we're going to now say that you can't transfer that impact fee to another buyer. And so they've collected these payments all along, under good faith, that that's how it's going to be, is they'll be able to have that impact fee prepaid. And then they all of a sudden just vote, you guys didn't even know this probably happened, because who pays attention to the Water Board meeting?
You go to the Water Board meeting, you can't speak up, you can't say nothing.
And so they go and, right.
You know, and I'm very against, against the Water Company. I think they should be just banned.
I think that when they went and did this, it was just ingenuous to the public, and I just, I don't get it. I'm going to have these people stand up and introduce themselves. They're affected. This is, this is someone that is directly affected by this decision.
So, I'm Gareth, this is my wife Tara, and we're looking at buying a lot down here, been working on it for several months. And we came out here, we love the area, it's awesome, we make a great little jewel in the rough out here.
Drove out here for five hours today to be here tonight, and we did purchase the lot today, so that we can be part of your community.
And, you know, when we first started talking to the owner of the lot, he says, you know, here's the other thing, there's no impact fee because I paid my twenty-nine dollars every month. I've done this for years, it's, it's good to go. I'm like, awesome, perfect, that's, that's great, we're glad, we've got, we loved the lot, probably, it's still probably a little more expensive than, you know, but it's, it's worth it to us. But then, all of a sudden now, we find out, well, now the rules have changed with the impact fee. Now there's another twelve thousand dollars on top of that that has to be paid, and, I mean, this is not, this, you might expect that in North Korea or somewhere, you know, to happen, but not here. I mean, the Water Company's come in and says, there's an asset, we've promised the landowners, the current landowners, this asset, we're coming in, we want that asset, we're stripping it away, you're going to pay us the twelve thousand dollars if you sell your land.
And that landowner fully believed that that was going to be transferred to us. He fully believed that that was going to be an asset that he owned, that was going to be transferred to us, and used that as a bidding asset that he promised us. And I fully believed that he believed that that would be transferred to us. Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. Is there twelve thousand five hundred or twelve thousand?
But that's, but that's also what, at the time that he started paying those twenty-nine dollar payments, he was told.
He was, he was promised that.
That's what bites me about it. I, I can see changing this in the future where we don't do this again. I can see changing it that from now on, we're not going to do this, but to take someone that's been paying in good faith, that based on that promise, and all of a sudden change that promise, it's crazy.
Yeah, she's yanking the carpet out from her bed.
I think it's ridiculous. Harold Merrick?
That policy was brought to, uh, we passed that by the board on, in August. Richard Sosky brought it to our attention, and he felt it should transfer with the property. That document and that policy is with our attorney, and I talked to him for a couple of hours today, and that's under revision, so all of this is, I hate to be hung to the wall before somebody says something about what are you doing about it, they assume that we're not trying to work.
I give a report on what happened at our last meeting, and all this happened at the last meeting, so. I, I've got a, a job, fiduciary job, to tell these guys what's happening.
Okay, I'm not here to argue.
If you wanted to communicate with me that we're going to change that policy, that I could change what happens in this meeting. But that phone call never happened, so. If you want to call it, run me out to cry, this is, you know, for me, this is, I mean, don't mess with my town.
Well, the one other comment, when I spoke with Harold earlier this year, a few months ago, was, well, we see the property owners are selling this, and they're making that extra twelve thousand dollars on it, and we want that to stay in the Water District.
So this is what Harold told you?
Those are thinking for some time, and we did not act on it until August. We rethought the policy, and it is being committed to by council.
I love it here, because I, I just, I think that's how it should be. I don't, I agree with Harold that, you know, we can't be doing this because of the amount of money we take in. In relation to twelve thousand dollars is a huge difference, and I'm not sure why that was ever begun, but because we begun it, I just think it's wrong to change it. I'm glad you're changing your mind on it, so. Anyway, any other comments on that part of it?
Just one, one question. Do we know when, is it changed? Is it going to change back, or do we know when we update it?
It has to go through a meeting, so.
Okay.
If he hasn't, the next meeting, it can be voted on, but those are only once a month.
Okay.
If they have it then, so. On finance charges, the other thing that apparently we're going to get worked out, according to Harold, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm saying that what we would like to do is sit down so everybody has the same documents and the same bills and the same ideas.
Okay.
And, and get this thing on one page and come to some kind of resolution. We can't continue to operate this way, either one of us.
Which way is that?
Everybody going their separate way, loggerheads, and not understanding.
I haven't moved. I've been here trying to figure this out, and it's you guys that have been doing all the moving away.
You know, I have a comment, since we're in the public. When, I was in a meeting, a closed meeting, with, with Tanya and Robert, and the whole demise of wanting to get rid of Robert because someone didn't want to work with him, this idea of separating was because of Robert. And now that Robert's gone, and between the time that we lost a mayor, and then got a new mayor, that plan didn't change. It stayed the same, whether Robert was there or not. And it was communicated to me that it was Robert's fault, that it was being torn apart, that someone couldn't work with them anymore. And we tried to work with both sides at the time, and it bugs me that after the fact, that we're still on this road to separation and not working together, and it bugs me a lot. And I'm, I'm with the mayor.
Well, so, so to go back to being mayor for a minute, because I, I started talking a little bit about that, and one of the first jobs I had, literally on the first day I walked in here, was signing what they call a reconciliation. Reconciliation is basically a document, you know, similar to this, that just says, here's the check, and here's why we paid the check, and I'm supposed to sign all of these. And so I'm, I'm looking at this reconciliation, and I'm thinking to myself, holy crap. Nine thousand dollars is what we were writing a check to the SSD for, for the salary of the bookkeeper. Nine thousand dollars for that one month, and I was just flabbergasted. And so, so when you say that, you know, first day in the job, they want to separate billing, I get a nine thousand dollar reconciliation post to take care of. The first check I signed as mayor, you know, as we go down, two, three weeks later, is a ninety-five hundred dollar check for Tanya's, for the bookkeeping, for one month. And I'm just like, this is unsustainable. How in the world are we going to be able to sustain this over any given period of time? And a lot of it was overtime that was being put in, and, um, most of you know the bookkeeper, we've, you know, talked about earlier in the meeting, she's thirty-two, thirty-six hours. She's here part-time, and we had no problem getting everything done, so I'm not sure why we had so many hours, but. As mayor, I had to say that this is crap, I got to make a change here, and because we didn't keep Tanya, I think there's a lot of hard feelings for Tanya, and I, you know, I get that, but, you know, there's no way we could afford it, based on what checks we're writing. So anyway, that, that was my, my first experience in the first, you know, week or two of my job, and obviously, I had to make some changes to be able to get that under control. And so that's kind of where we got today. Then we already talked about, you know, the separation, why they're not here anymore, kind of conversation, and if, if you look at it, I want to go back to what I was talking about. When I first started this meeting, I said that I'm going to tell you some stuff today, and you're going to know, does it feel right, or it doesn't feel right? And that's, there's so many other things I, I want to go over. I just, I, you know, I'm on a roll, I might as well. So, Tanya gave, so the Water Company gave us a bill for the water, because we were collecting the water still at the time that this separation happened, now those water bills are out, so we owe them that water bill money. And I've got to verify that. I mean, I'm not sure I've got, you know, can I trust this? Because I'm looking at these numbers, and I can't match them up anyplace. I call up our software vendor, which is Polaris. Polaris is who they also use, and Polaris couldn't figure it out. We spent weeks of time poring over this stuff, trying to get anything to match up, and we've got three invoices from them, not just one, and none of those match either. And so we're trying to figure out, what do we owe these people? And so we're going over this stuff, and Polaris can't even figure it out. And anyway, I've communicated back with them that I can't get this stuff to match up, and I called Nathan, our old one, our old accountant, asked him, how does he do it? He says, I use a spreadsheet. And the only way you can do it, he explained it to me, and I says, oh, that's good, okay, I'll go look for the spreadsheet. And so we go, you know, looking on the server, trying to find this thing, and I sent an email over to the Water Company and told them what I was doing, and I get an email back, says, oh, no, you can't go off of Polaris. Now, for three weeks, she's been going off of Polaris, trying to tell us this is what we owe, but now she's saying that, no, you don't, you don't go off of Polaris. And you have to pull this report, and then you put it in the spreadsheet, and that's going to tell you how much. And so, okay, so now we have the spreadsheet that she's using, and we're sharing that with Polaris, which, I should back up one step and say that when this was brought to their attention, that they can't run this kind of report, Polaris wrote the spreadsheet that we're using up here, and then there's a bunch of them that don't even match at all, and we can't figure out why. And so we're supposed to have that meeting Tuesday, you know, two days, yesterday, that, that didn't happen, but anyway, to figure out why this stuff doesn't match. And so we've got a, you know, a problem with the billing, and in the process of me trying to research this, there was a history for six years where, keep in mind, the town created the Water District. The town created, put that first deposit in their bank account, two hundred and fifty dollars. Couple weeks later, they put two thousand dollars in, a couple weeks later, put another two thousand dollars in. The Water Company was being supported by the town, trying to create the Water Company to benefit the town. And so now, as we go down the road a little ways, it was two thousand and fifteen, about March, I think it was, when they finally even bought a postage stamp. So, we had been supporting them all up until that time, and we're also answering their phones, we're mailing out the, the envelopes and stuffing them, and do you know how long it takes to fold three hundred envelopes? Oh my God, would you guys sign up for an email, please? Takes forever. I've been in there many times, doing that in between my other jobs, but anyway, so we have this agreement where the town keeps the, any late fees. Those late fees amounted to, you know, six years, for the first six years, it is thirty thousand dollars. This is why Tanya wanted to separate, is for that thirty thousand bucks. And the thirty thousand dollars, if you take that, divide that out over six years, you're talking about five thousand dollars in a year, divide that out by twelve months, you're talking about a few hundred bucks. That pays all of our labor that we've done for all these years. It's not a very big number. It's not like we're talking about thousands of dollars a month kind of a thing. We're talking about a few hundred dollars, and because of that, they want their own autonomy, and that's why we're separated. It's over that thirty thousand dollars. In my invoices that I have right here, that she's giving me, she has that thirty thousand down there as well. She's requested that money back, and it's still on my bill, and it's still on there, that we're, they're okay with us paying two thousand dollars a month. So that, those late fees amount to over, so there's the thirty thousand, and then since the first of the year, the Water Company said, pay up or else on the twenty-nine dollar standby fee. So they had a lot of influx of late fees come in, and so to date, let me back up a second. So keep in mind, in this meeting, they're saying that we're going, this is in September, we're going to separate because of these late fees. That's why we're doing it. That's what they told me. And so when I'm researching this, trying to find out why and how much money I owe these guys, so I can write them a check, we discovered that, her back in March, they started taking the late fees. So they slipped it in on the bills, Robert Campbell was signing the checks, probably Debbie as well, but nobody knew that was there. At the time, in March, if you go back to that relationship, they thought they had, it was their person. Tanya worked for the town at that time. And they thought, this is our bookkeeper doing our work, and we are getting an honest shake on this bill. They didn't notice that they had slipped in all this money, so it, it adds up to over, between March and now, it's forty-two thousand, forty-one thousand, forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents is what that amounts to. We have also returned non-sufficient fund payments, a thousand twenty dollars. Those are funds that we've already paid to them, yet we paid a check bounce, so now we're out the money. And there's also one more issue that I didn't bring up the other day at a water meeting, and that's the interlocal agreement. I can go back, and there's a six-year history of interlocal agreement that says that the SSD is paying the town for the internet, the phone, the, you know, the office, and, you know, use, and all that kind of stuff. That number was the same every single month for, ever since this, I think it was March of two thousand and fifteen, it's been the same number. And I've got a history, I can show it to you. Anybody that wants to see it, I can pull that history out and show it to you. I'm not talking about making crap up. I've got the paperwork. And when Tanya took over the books, January, February, zero dollar was paid to the town. Then a few dollars were paid, and then a few more dollars were paid, but the old, between the beginning of the year to September, we're missing roughly about ten thousand dollars on the interlocal agreement as well, because she, you know, well, they changed it. There was never a meeting with the Water Company that says, let's change this. There was not a meeting with the Water Company that says, we're going to start collecting the late payments back in March. They didn't say, oh, let's start billing on those, and that's not fair. No discussion. I know this town council, they have said nothing about that, oh yeah, we voted on that. So this is one person just changing the bill, changing what has been going on, and it is so wrong. And it's the one thing that I have, and the most upset about with the Water Company, is the nepotism, because you've got a dad that protected his daughter, and the daughter protected the dad. And that's what I think is wrong with this whole situation, and it's, I hope you all feel, this is not right.
I, my father helped you in nineteen ninety-eight, get this building and set up the special service district. So we have quality of water, quality services from Ted Gubler, to rework, having good service. I remember my mother taking water out every month, every week for Ted Gubler to test, and for people to come and buy property that they may have tipped twelve thousand dollars for water. We paid fifteen when we moved here. And I, that's just wrong. It's, it's wrong. My, my father and mother worked hard to get this building. My father and mother worked hard to get this building, so that we had places to hold meetings, and get a volunteer fire department, and Sandy Ford. My mother and father worked to get the special service water district going, for the town, not for this water. So this is wrong. This is really wrong. And I don't like seeing new residents have to pay twelve thousand dollars and earn that fix in my life, you know? And that's, that's going to stifle growth out here. If we want to build more wells, and things like that, it's going to stifle growth. I'm hurt, I'm personally hurt by this. My dad did this for the town.
This is, yeah, and that's, and the town did this for the town. The town created water, which improved the town. The town wanted to provide, improve water. Back, if you go back, you guys knew the town, we had a private water company, we paid twenty-five dollars a month, it was awesome.
Fifteen.
Well, back further, okay. Since I've been around this whole area, it's twenty-five bucks. But the problem is, the water was bad. The pipes were sucky, the water, the pressure wasn't there, you know?
Well, I can tell you, we came to this town several months ago, we actually came to look at this town, and we went to one of your ice cream socials, and I don't, some of you may have saw it. We actually walked the perimeter of one of your ice cream socials, and saw many of you, spoke to some of you, because that's the kind of town we wanted to come to. When you hear about things like this happening, you think twice about coming to a town like this. You have deep questions, where when you're walking the perimeter, and you see the town, and you meet the people, that's the type of town you want to come to, not the type of town that you hear when things like this come up. And so, that's what I would encourage you to think about, is those, you know, those themes, I think, the mayor's talking about.
Yeah, Jerry Dorries, in ten sixty-four West Foothill Drive. A little confused on one thing. How does somebody pay a water company, and pull it away from everybody else and go in their own direction?
On your end of-
I don't understand why one person or two people can do this. And in my opinion, this water company should be under the umbrella of the city. It should be the water company, the fire department, the water department, it should be, and that brings it all in life of this city. One group can't grab a water company, I don't know, do you own it? Did you guys own this, or, I don't know, I'm in the dark here, do you guys own the water company?
Your brief explanation is, the water company was created by the town, that is true. It was then sent to Salt Lake, and it was chartered by the lieutenant governor's office. We operate as a state water company. We do not operate under the jurisdiction of the town, the town, and we start to work together. I'm flabbergasted, and I don't know where to start. I've been a volunteer for this town for six years for not one hundred cent. I helped build this building twenty-five years ago, have lived here for a lot of years, and hustled my butt for this town, and I get terrorized by a mayor up here, telling his side of the story.
It's not you, it's not you here. Your daughter. Why are you pulling the water company away? Is it yours? You act like it's your water company. And your daughter is like taking it over here, and holding us at bay. I'm just saying, it should be, it should be in the city. That's what I'm saying.
Where are we being, if we, let me back up a little bit. If there are some issues, and we have had some unintended consequences, or made some decisions that aren't working out right, as I told Richard Soski and other folks, we have taken this to legal counsel, and we'll get this thing straightened out. But I don't know of anybody in Apple Valley that has been damaged by water quality, is state tested. We have all the water we need, the fire department is backed up by the service district. We have done everything we could possibly do to provide good, quality water everywhere. And we've put in the infrastructure, so now the developers can come and connect to it, and we're not to hang up if some developer wants to do it. So we're prepared to do that. If we've offended some people, I apologize. And I'm willing to talk to anybody about anything, and as I started the meeting out, I wanted to get together with Sean Guzman, the mayor, people involved, and find out where these glitches are at. But the separation, in all reality, always existed. The town did our billing for us.
Can I add something you said, Mr. O'Neil? The water district got grants and loans to fix, upgrade, and add water lines, clean out wells, to service the town.
The town got that, not the water system.
Okay, that's fine.
Originally, when we bought the water companies, I was on the board then.
That's fine, can I talk to her about it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. The town upgraded the water, the town, the water district, whatever, for the town, for everybody in the town. There's fifteen houses on the other side of town, and I'm one of them, but the water line didn't go down that side of the road. It went over towards, towards Harold's, I don't believe it went to Harold's, but it went to the old mayor's, and went up to the, to the storage units, and everybody on that side of town. Everybody in Cedar Point got upgraded wells and everything else, but nobody on that side of town got a new water line, or a water line put in to service anybody on that side of town. It has, everybody over there has very poor wells that very minimal to get by. Trevor Black's been on the council for many years, he's living off a half a gallon a minute.
May I add one point along this same line? We have, we went to the extra mile and insom to purchase Cannon Springs, which produces three to five hundred gallons of spring water, the best water you can find. Actually, the best water there is in this part of the world. We, as a service district, bought that, and then in the process of designing a pipeline, will gravity feed the tanks in Cedar Point, which could be hooked onto Apple Valley. Those springs will provide every drop of water Apple Valley would need at this point, and all the wells could be shut down. I get the feeling that I'm going to get shot in the parking lot at nine o'clock. But we honestly are trying to do our, we make mistakes, I'd be the first one to admit it, but we were long and hard. The service district has two employees. The service district is over forty acres, or forty square miles. It's twelve miles long, five miles wide in points. So if you looked at the footprint, forty square miles with one guy to service all of this stuff. The other night, I was out in the mud and the goo out of Cannon, trying to fix a leak, where somebody stepped on the water meter in the dark, broke the line, broke it on our side, we had to shut the place down, fix it. That stuff goes on all the time, I don't charge for any of that.
That's okay, Harold, but that's not why we're here, we hear about the budget and everything that you guys have all messed up.
And that's what I'm trying to say, is that we're, we're not trying to take advantage of anybody, it doesn't belong to me, the service district belongs to Apple Valley.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is the decisions, the decisions have got us to here, the decisions have created this separation. It's the decision to have two people working for the water department that are generating, what's the payroll, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, somewhere in that ballpark? Keep in mind, we've got a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars total revenue coming in on water sales. A hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and three-fourths of it, just about, is going out in revenue, or just for two people's salaries, the retirement system.
Okay, we could, we could carry this on all night long, but-
This is me trying to tell everybody what's going on, and why I'm upset about the water company, though.
If you think you're upset, I'm as upset as you are, Marty, we're not going anywhere on this.
Where we're going on this is me telling people what's going on with the water company.
Well, lowlife, I am trying to take over the town and the water system, and they're all going to-
I'm not trying to take over anything, I'm trying to tell you, this is, here's, here's the other part that he's not saying. We had extra money when we bought that Cannon Springs, so they're also talking about refinancing Cannon Springs. We're on a one percent loan right now for thirty years, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And when you take that three hundred and sixty-two thousand, he wants to change it to a three percent loan over the course of forty years. I was in mortgage business, I could do the math real quick and easy, and it increases our payment, it doesn't decrease it. And so, to have people making those kind of decisions that are actually bad for the town, I get offended.
That decision has not been made.
I get that part of it, but that's-
Well, and why are you putting it out? If it hasn't been made yet, you're making false, false information to your, to your constituents.
Actually, it's not, it's in writing, and I'm just-
If it hasn't been passed, it means as much as the ink drying on something that hasn't been signed yet. No good.
I get what you're saying, but my point is, is bad decisions are made every day. And that's what, that's what it sets me, go ahead.
I haven't been to a water meeting for a while, but isn't the mayor and another council member on the board of the water district?
Yes.
Yes. Do we always have three to two votes, or?
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Junior.
Marty, I just want to say, there's, this is really, really disheartening, seriously. I mean, for this community to be doing this crap, and what's going on, this is disheartening. And I want to say, there's a lot of very successful SSDs out there. Hurricane Valley District, the most successful district in almost Utah, I would say, and they are doing very good. And I think, you know, this is, this is just, this is getting too much, and like, everybody's fighting about this crap, and it, this is bad, this is bad.
That's why I brought it up, because I agree with you. I agree with you, Marty.
I'm not making it any better.
I'd just like to make a comment that, Junior, you set the tone on a much ado about nothing on a dot gov versus dot com. So you set the tone, congratulations.
What I'd like to say, that is, you know, Hurricane City at one time had an SSD for their water company too, and then they took it back into the town.
That's right. The what?
Hurricane City.
The water district?
When they were a small town, they had a water district as well.
Yeah.
They eventually, because it wasn't serving the town the way it was supposed to, they took it away, and they took it back under the-
Well, I'm personally talking about the fire district, and how awesome that fire district is.
Well, and I believe that we have a great district.
And they can work with us, they can work with us.
But I'm going to say right now, because the argument's gone the other way. I've sat in meetings in prior administration where the problem of the separation was due to our mayor. Okay?
I don't disagree.
And I was told that the whole problem was because of our mayor, is why they were separating. And it was coming from Tanya. And then as soon as our mayor was pushed out of office, and Shanghai himself, not saying that every decision he made was right, but he was Shanghai. And I sat in meetings where somebody wasn't going to work with that, with that mayor for this town, regardless, no matter what. And so the decisions that she said, the demands that she made, that's the only reason why she was going to stake the town, and we were trying to work it out, to get everybody to work together, okay? It's still the same demands that are happening right now. They're the same demands that after Robert left, the demands didn't change, the tone didn't change. But at first, it was all Robert's fault, and it was all because of Robert. Those demands didn't change, and they're still not changing. So it's not just this public making this, this argument and this problem.
Nobody's saying it's just the public.
Okay, so we've all been trying to work together.
Yeah.
Went through the previous administration, we've been trying to work together, but there's a few people that don't want to work with anybody, because it's their way or the highway. And those decisions have come to this argument, and this problem.
I don't disagree with you, but it's a little deeper than that. But I don't, I don't disagree with you.
Wait.
It is this, and we know that, we know that, it's obvious, Mike, you know that as well as I.
And we need to come, we need to come to terms with it.
Why we're here.
And we're to sit there and rag on him, because he's making decisions based on all the ragging that's going to him, when he needs to make the proper decisions for this town to benefit the people in this town, and even people in this meeting that are ragging on him, it's ridiculous.
This is a comment.
I know, I'm upset because we are in this confrontation. I'm not upset at you.
No, I know.
I'm not upset at Harold, I'm not upset at anybody. My tone is right now, because I'm upset because we are at this point.
Let me, let me add something to this, that, you know, there came a point that I don't want to do anything with the water company, as far as trying to dismail or take it apart, I'm just, you know what, maybe we can just get along. And that's, there's came a place as being mayor that I just decided, in fact, it actually came from Junior, he says, what difference does it make to you? I said, well, first off, it makes a big difference because I live here. But I had thought about what he said, and I says, you know what, I'm just going to back off. But that's, the problem is, is you back off a little bit, and then you get one of those invoices, and another invoice. And you start, I got to verify that. Then you dig up this information, and it's like, holy shit, what are they doing?
Well, people like us show up at your desk in the middle of the day, go, mayor.
I got upset today, and I'm talking to these people that are just moving our town, because it's pissing me off that they're going to have to come up with money. But my point is, is I get people calling me constantly on different issues, I can hardly get anything done a day, because of all the phone calls. And so when you say that I'm dragging us out, or I'm doing this, it's me reacting to the crap that I'm getting handed. And the crap's coming from the SSD right now. And that's, and that's why I'm upset, and that's why I brought this up. It's not me trying to do anything or undo anything, as much as, this is ridiculous, this crap that's going on.
Would it make sense to get an outside source, do the counting for both the town and the special district, this way there's no conflict of interest?
You know, we can, we can, you know, throw that in a discussion another time, that we can decide right now. So, anyway, I brought this stuff up, I, the meeting's getting long, so I want to wrap it up. I've got so many more things I can tell you guys, you can just, you know, but I think I'll leave it where it is, and maybe another meeting will pick it up. Any questions or stuff that are regarding everybody?
I say we move on.
Let's move on to item number nine. Approval of minutes?
I read the minutes.
I have to.
Motion?
I made the motion, we accept the minutes from county council meeting October third, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that. Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. And I think I'm going to just, is there anything that's pressing on item ten, or we just leave that one alone?
We can pass that.
Make the motion, we table item ten, for interest of time, let's, Marty's got it.
I accept the motion.
Okay.
Vote?
Aye.
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 And last one, number eleven, public comments, you guys have made a lot of comments, but somebody wants to say something.
Could you please explain to whoever's here what that crane is doing out there, so I don't have to keep explaining to Pico?
The Traco?
Yeah, the Traco.
Is that where it is?
We're digging a road.
It's called the Traco. Yeah, I've got, Travis Holm wants to get a subdivision up on top of that mesa, and that road is drawn on his primary plaque, and so he just took it upon himself to start digging. You guys, I got three phone calls one evening, and I called Travis, and I was out there the next morning, I called the operator, I know who he is, and he says, get off that thing, you don't have a permit. And so we stopped them in their tracks at that point. I told him it was politically a stupid move to go and start digging up a hillside when we haven't even approved the thing. And, you know, I spent a whole day, you know, doing all this stuff with Travis, like, you don't get to do it that way. I says, you want a friend of the town council, and sure as hell better not get down here, because I'm not, I'm not going to put up with it. Anyway, so that's where we're at with that.
I got a question about Cedar Point. Over there off Cannon Road, is Cannon?
Canyon. Canyon. Could you state your name, please?
Change your name, please.
John McNamara, sixteen, sixty-four South Menzley Drive, Cedar Point. They don't take a lot of land up there.
On Canyon?
Yes.
On Canyon.
And I'm not concerned personally about it, it's not my backyard at this juncture. But I've heard a lot of comments made about, well, they're going to do this, and they're going to do that. I've also heard comments from people, well, they want to separate Cedar Point and all that area from Apple Valley proper. area from Apple Valley proper. I'd like to know, can anybody in this room explain to me and help me understand just what's going on with those people? I know Jerry Eason's involved, I know the personal landowners are involved.
Are you talking about the disconnect?
Yes. Yeah, and not only that, but also what's going on? What are they gonna do with that piece of property up there?
If you're, if you're referring to the disconnected South Mayor, they did not follow all the procedures and the statutes of follow-through.
I just didn't want to say anything without your permission.
Yeah, no, so, so go ahead, Mayor, and if you'd like to address that.
Yeah, it's just, there's a certain paperwork process, they haven't done any of it. Only thing, they did sign on the petition, handed it to us, and all the other paperwork that's involved are, you know...
So that's what they're... What about that piece of property that they didn't clear it off?
It's referencing to Jerry Eason, trying to get away.
Okay, let me finish on the one, and I'll, I'll follow up on another one. One of the signers on their petition too is Kendra Webb. And in concept, we have an agreement with Kendra Webb on doing what she wants to do, so I think she'll be dropping off that petition anyway. So that she was one of the primary, they were short on how much property, owner's signatures they had, and then Kendra's, I don't think she'll be involved in it at all, so that takes off a bunch more, so I don't think it's gonna go anywhere. Now, to Jerry Eads' project, I, that project was approved by the previous administration under Rick Mosher in around, was it November? Somewhere around November of, over a year ago, and...
I remember when that was going on. I remember the meetings, hearing what was going on.
Right, and so what we're left with it is, is I haven't signed up on the drawings yet, because they haven't given us all the construction drawings. In their meeting where they had their approval, it said that they were changing the project over to a tiny cabin project.
The whole bit of land is considered?
No, 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 yeah, right, there's four, four lots there, and it's going to be a tiny cabin project. And so Jerry came to me, wanted to get his permit, and said it was an RV park. So I go through and do the follow-up on it, trying to verify something, he says, "No, it was a tiny cabin project, so get your drawings together for your cabins, so I can get those approved, and I'll give you your permit." And the other thing that's left over is they have not combined their lots. There's four lots there, and they have to be only one lot if you're gonna have a business like that. And we, the town council at the time decided to approve that project if it's cabins, because then you're talking about just people and cars coming and going, not fifth-wheel RVs coming in and out of your neighborhood. And so, I'm doing everything I can to say that not on my watch, we're gonna have fifth-wheels going in and out of there. It was never approved for them.
Plus, it's been over a year, right? It's been over a year? So they have to be...
You know, I said, I don't know if it's been a year or not.
It's been longer.
But I would say this, Mayor, there are other technical, technical flaws within, some others that they haven't followed through on, that you haven't enumerated today, so really, just an answer to your question is, there's, there was a project that was approved with certain conditions, and, and there are requirements on the project that have not been fulfilled.
All right, so anyways, probably gonna go nowhere, because we are hitting November now, and I think we're right at that one-year mark if we...
It was October fifth, I believe.
October?
October fifth, I think.
Well, that's planning permission, though, I think it was in, I'm pretty sure it was November.
November seventh, I think.
I think it is right around right now, a year ago, when the town council's in the motion to approve the project.
So do I understand what you're saying, is this is sitting in a kind of a gray area now? Because they haven't supplied what they used to do.
It changes and everything.
And is it going to be small cabins, like what we have going on down here? Or are they gonna be, 'cause I was over there last Sunday, and I saw these trailers on wheels, they were little small cabins, and they were on wheels, on little tiny homes. Okay, but... Permanent tiny cabins. So nothing is going to be done at this junction until all this paperwork is done?
We'll have to address that, Mayor, with, with the property owner and the applicant. And I, I don't think it'd be prudent to say anymore.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to throw it up, because I keep getting people coming up, "What are they doing over there? I heard of this, I hear that, I've seen this, I've seen that."
Well, yeah, the same third move, so...
Well, I see, I see what they're doing.
Oh yeah, Richard.
Something that might help you a little bit. Jerry has worked some deal on some land down in the gap, I don't know if you know where that's at?
No.
And all those tiny homes have been moved down in the gap. They're all sitting down there right now.
Nobody can see them. Get into the county.
They're all in the county.
Get into the county.
Couple of days ago.
They're all in the county.
How many do you know of them?
There's five of them down there right now. I know that because I'm building a house for a guy down there right now.
Okay, to close public comment?
I make a motion, we close public comment?
Aye.
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 And item twelve, discussion action on the Gabriel project, I make a motion that we table that for the next meeting?
Second motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item thirteen, we're closing session, anything? Sean, yeah?
I don't have any.
So I make a motion that we, anybody need a closing session, okay? I make a motion that we table that. Item thirteen, we're closing session.
I make a motion.
No, I'm already done, just answer that.
Eleven.
Close.
Aye.
Aye. Item fourteen. And...
Make a motion, we turn?
Aye.
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 Hey, Mayor. Shh, hey, Mayor.
Yeah, it's okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Hold on, minute.
I would just like to say one thing to the people that are here, that, I'm sorry, I forgot your names.
Garth Terran.